Mr. Scrobuck.
Here.
Ms. Gordon.
Here.
Ms. Pigeon.
Here.
Mr. Ackerman.
Here.
Reverend Perry.
Here.
Mr. Heller.
Here.
Dr. Zarek. All present.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Heller to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Heller, I'll turn it over to you for this month's superintendent report.
Thank you, President Scrobuck. Good evening, board members, staff, families, and online participants. I am pleased to report that hybrid learning is going well so far for the cohorts of students who have returned. As a reminder, we've taken a very thoughtful, cautious approach to students' return, all the while monitoring state and regional data and guidance. So far, we have welcomed the following groups. On October 9th, Cohort 1 returned. PK through 21-year-old students with multiple related service needs that could not be met in a remote setting such as speech therapy, occupational or physical therapy, and the like. On October 19th, three additional cohorts returned, consisting of our site program of student interns, middle school emotional support program, and students in our LRE, Least Restrictive Environment Setting C. On the 26th of October, our fifth cohort returned, elementary students in our emotional support program. And last week, we welcomed our sixth cohort, consisting of our youngest learners in grades PK, kindergarten, and first grade, who requested an in-person experience. I'd like to take a minute and just show you a few slides from last week's opening, if I could. You never know what six feet looks like, so our buildings were charged with helping our students understand just what a six-foot separation meant between themselves and others. Sometimes it was easily done, and sometimes we needed a little bit of help. And here you see two of our finest custodians at Lancashire painting out some paw prints exactly six feet apart, again, to give some spatial recognitions to students to help them understand what safe social distancing looks like at school. This is a snapshot of our new Claymont Elementary School, just recently reopened this section. Again, you see some arrows and stickers on the floor, just like you'd see at the supermarket, helping one-way traffic again to ensure safe social distancing with our students. Today's classroom is much different than anything we've looked at or seen before. Here's an example of one of our earliest years back in session. Remember that the DPH and DOE guidelines allowed for three feet of social distancing. Brandywine has chosen to maintain a six-foot social distancing separation between students in the classroom based on everything that we've read with the CDC and best practices. As a matter of fact, over the last several weeks, the CDC has started to change its language in terms of social distancing, moving their previous reference of six feet to six feet or greater for students and adults. Again, normally you duck into one of our kindergarten preschool first-grade classrooms at this time of the year, and you'd see students seated at the feet of their teacher, probably in a reading group, enjoying storytime or working together on some kind of project. With the social distancing that we are forced and mandated to enforce, that is no longer possible. But yet, as strange and as hard as that seems to comprehend, that it could be enjoyable. Let me tell you, the most gratifying part of the reopening was walking through those classrooms and seeing the smiles and the giggles and children's faces lighting up as they said, "Mr. Hourback, is that, is that really you?" Because that was the first time they had met their principal, Mr. Hourback. They had seen him several times in Zoom, but never in person. So it was great to hear the laughter of children echoing in our halls and classrooms as they returned last week. Just a few more here. Here you can see one of our teachers teaching not only the students sitting in front of her, but also the students that are at home, either because they've chosen full remote or they're in a different cohort of hybrid students. Well, and speaking of Mr. Hourback, there he is. He's actually in a discussion with a teacher who is at home. Things that you normally wouldn't have seen. Here's a shot of a screening device made out of plexiglass so that the librarian or anyone else and a student can have a close conversation. Notice that we have PPE here in the presence. All staff have access to the PPE needed to perform their job and responsibilities, including, up to and including, face shields, face masks, gloves, gowns. All that has been procured and made available to staff that are in need. Typically, this is a cafeteria at Carcroft, recently renovated. You would have seen some gorgeous cafeteria tables, all neatly laid out. But again, with social distancing, you can't fit that many students in a traditional cafeteria at six feet apart facing all in the same direction. To accomplish this, many of our cafeterias chose to use desks to help maintain that social distancing. And because not enough desks would fit in those cafeterias, we had to revert to using the gymnasium in several of our buildings to accomplish just that. And interesting that today marks the beginning of National Education Week, November 16th. And the next two photos kind of speak volumes in terms of what our teachers have done to meet the needs of our students during this pandemic. Here's a teacher at Harland Elementary School who has embraced the technology, embraced new ways of developing lessons, engaging students, not only students that are right there in front of her in the classroom, but students that are 10 and 18 miles away from her. And it's that kind of enthusiasm and love of what you truly are passionate about that makes the teachers in Brandywine special. And just a heartfelt thank you to all of our staff members, teachers, specialists, custodians, food service workers, our administrators, for being who they are and how they care about and love the kids that they serve, whether face-to-face or remote. I think that's what separates the Brandywine School District teacher from others in the state. So thank you, Brandywine, for the outstanding job and the kickoff to National Education Week. Hope you enjoy. With that being said, we are continually and constantly faithfully monitoring the COVID data from national, regional, state, county, and even zip code levels. As a reminder, the state has three stages guiding the opening of schools. Stage 1, minimal community spread. Stage 2, the stage we are currently in, minimal to moderate community spread. And Stage 3, where we found ourselves last year, significant community spread. There are three criteria that the state looks at in determining what stage the public school systems are in. And those three criteria are the new case rate, the percent of tests that are positive, and average daily hospitalizations. I want to share with you just a little bit of that data right now. In terms of new case rate, and this information is as recent as this afternoon at about 4 o'clock. 217 roughly new cases. This is for the state, and you'll notice that that puts us in the red in that category. When we look at the percent of tests that are positive, puts us squarely in the yellow. Yellow being 1% to 8%. And when we look at daily average hospitalizations, again, puts us towards the bottom of the yellow criteria. And those are the three big indicators that the state is monitoring, that we're monitoring. We have weekly phone conferences with the governor's office. Last Friday, we had an extensive phone conference in which many officials from the Delaware Department of Health joined the conversation. We spoke about the data, the data trends. And yes, the data trends are starting to become alarming. Again, here are the response rates, and notice the date of November 16th. If we look back one week to November the 10th, let's see how these numbers change. So again, just a week ago. New case rate, percent of tests positive, average daily hospitalizations. So we see a significant spike in those new case statistics and a pretty considerable bump in the percent of tests that are positive. That is alarming and something that we're definitely going to have to keep an eye on, not just in the coming weeks, but in the coming days. In addition to those three criterion, Brandywine has also kept a very close eye on something called the R-not value, or the R-not coefficient. It shows the rate of spread. So a coefficient of 1 means that on average, if one person has COVID, they transmit it to one other individual. Anything higher than 1 means that there is spread. Anything lower than 1 means that the spread is being contained. So when we take a look at our COVID-19 R-not values, there's all 50 states. And if you're looking for Delaware, let me make it a little bit easier for you. Yesterday, today we're at 1.25, yesterday we were 1.23. Yesterday, we were 13th in the nation in terms of having the highest R-not value. Today, we are 9th in the nation. Looking a little further, if we filter this and we look at just the states in the northeastern part of the US, you can see that it's even more alarming when we look at where Delaware is in terms of rate of spread. Just a reminder that most people don't realize that the state of Delaware is the sixth most densely populated state in the US. You surely wouldn't think that if you drove from Wilmington to Dover or down to the beach as you pass all that farmland and open land. But it's, Google it, it's true, sixth most densely populated. And if those two southern counties are as rural as they are, that just tells you how much more densely populated Newcastle County is, especially in and around the city of Wilmington. So keeping an eye on that spread number is critical. We'll continue to track that data and guidance with the hope of completing our phase in as follows. November 30th, we are scheduled to have grades 2 and 3 return. December 7th, grades 4 and 5. December 14th, grades 6 through 12. But I will put an asterisk behind those return dates. Based on that data, Mr. President, members of the board, we may have to make some very tough decisions in the coming days, weeks, including the fact that we don't have students in school next week. But we will continue to monitor that information and send out updates to parents. I would advise parents who currently have students who are coming back to hybrid or plan to come back to hybrid to make alternate plans just in case that data continues in its current trend and we need to revert and pivot back to remote instruction for all students. Let's hope that that's not the case. The general framework of our hybrid learning model divides students into three groups. The remote learning group remains at home for their instruction. The students receiving in-person instruction are split into Hybrid Cohorts 1 and Hybrid Cohort 2. This model provides two days of in-person instruction for families that requested that opportunity. Students will be in school either on Mondays and Tuesdays as Cohort 1 or Thursdays and Fridays as Cohort 2. An additional two days of at-home learning is provided through live instruction with the teacher and students attending in person. Based on parent and staff feedback, Wednesdays are considered asynchronous learning days. Students will engage in independent learning activities provided by teachers. There's time built into Wednesdays for full remote students to receive live instruction in smaller groups for greater individualization to ensure that they're progressing in the grade level standards. With no students in buildings on Wednesdays, we also have an additional opportunity to deep-clean our facilities in between cohorts. Last meeting, I reported that I had planned to share some additional information regarding the secondary schedule in a couple of weeks. That process has taken a little longer than anticipated for two reasons. First is the fact that we're going to great lengths, and I really have to applaud the leadership team at District Office who are going out of their way to make sure that siblings are scheduled in the same cohorts across grade level clusters. Let me put that in English for you. If you have a second-grade son or daughter and an 11th-grade son or daughter, they'll be at home on the same days and coming in for hybrid learning on the same days. So that parents who are depending on those older siblings to watch their younger children, they won't have to worry about coordinating that. We're taking care of that. And I believe that we're the only district that has followed that model. It has taken an extra amount of elbow grease, but we know that it's going to benefit our parents and our students in the long run. And again, I applaud the team that's working on that. So that was one reason. We're also trying to work through a few bus-run challenges that are a bit more complicated than normal due to revised school hours and the addition of winter sports. So secondary students will be following the same Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday cohort model, just like the elementary students. Secondary parents and students will be notified of their cohort assignments, as well as bus assignments for those that requested district transportation in the coming weeks. Speaking of winter sports, they are due to start November 30th. However, some sports may be delayed in starting due to the completion of fall sports teams that have made the playoffs. At this point in time, BSD is preparing to offer all traditional winter sports except indoor track. Indoor track usually run the hallways. They don't have any in-state meets, and DIAA has canceled all out-of-state competitions. So for that reason, we have chosen not to move forward with indoor track. With winter sports being held inside and our gymnasiums only being able to accommodate 30% of their capacities for events, winter sports spectators will be limited to one spectator per athlete per game for all sports. The old saying, "When one door closes, another one opens." And thanks to the BSD Technology Team and the Facilities Team, including two individuals present tonight, Mr. Steve Funk, Mr. John Reed, BSD now has the ability to livestream games and other school events via YouTube Live. Visit our district website for information for a schedule of games that are going to be livestreamed and how to access YouTube Live accounts for each one of our high school buildings. We're also working with Newcastle County and their new provider, Mako Medical, to schedule additional testing dates within our district as more students are scheduled to return for in-person learning. We'll publicize these dates and locations as soon as they are finalized. And we encourage all parents to take advantage of those testing sites, especially those parents of students who are already in hybrid learning situations or are scheduled to come back. Our amazing school nurses, under the leadership of Beth Mattie, produced a very comprehensive document with information about our health and safety directives, classroom setup, ventilation, cleaning protocols, how we'll handle suspected, presumptive, or confirmed cases of COVID in all of our buildings. We emailed the document to all families several weeks ago and have it on the front page of the BSD website in the headline section. The BSD homepage also contains links to areas of the website for remote learning and hybrid learning so families can have quick access to the information they need. I'd like to just point out one thing regarding that communication that Beth Mattie and the nurses have been so diligent about. Whenever there is a positive case, whether a student or staff in our buildings, we will notify the students, the parents of those students that were in the building, anytime that there was a confirmed case. If through contact tracing, it's determined that there was close contact, those parents will receive a personal phone call alerting them to the fact that their child may have been in close contact with a positive COVID case. Now, that close-contact definition has changed recently. It used to be within six feet of each other, six feet of a positive individual for 15 minutes continuous. Now, the new definition from DPH is 15 minutes within six feet of a positive person in a cumulative 24-hour period. So it could be five minutes here, five minutes there, and five minutes somewhere else. That would count as being in close contact versus three weeks ago when it had to be 15 solid minutes straight. School Choice is now open. The application process this year is completely 100% online. We've provided information on our website. Anyone wishing to apply for School Choice should visit schoolchoicede.org, and that's all one word, schoolchoicede.org. On a related note, due to the pandemic, we cannot offer our traditional high school visitation day this year. Instead, all three high schools are preparing short informational videos and offering small group tours starting in early December. We will comply with all requirements regarding distancing and number of people on those tours and visits. Look for the videos and more information before Thanksgiving. We'll send emails, post information on the district website, the school websites, and use social media to spread the word. Finally, last week, a Brandywine High School teacher got Zoom-bombed. But it was for a good reason. Math teacher Jeanette Wilt was surprised on a Zoom call by WJBR and DSEA, who named Jeanette Teacher of the Month. Typically, the teacher would be surprised in their classroom, but they had to be creative this year. Jeanette received a gift certificate and warm wishes from Governor Carney, the Department of Education, and of course, her administrative team and colleagues at Brandywine High School. Congratulations, Jeanette. And that, Mr. President, is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Holer. It's not an easy process, and, you know, we see and hear a lot of misinformation on social media and within the community, but I think, you know, the detail of your report, including the visuals, helps show us, you know, the lengths that the district's going to navigate this as safely as we can. So I thank you. Did anyone else from the board want to have any questions or comments regarding the superintendent's report? Hearing none, that'll move us on to public comment. Just as usual, I want to say before we open public comment, give a friendly reminder that we do limit speakers to three minutes each. Board members do not respond to public comment and do not discuss public comment. This is your opportunity to be heard. If you are commenting via the Zoom link, the microphone will automatically cut off at the three minutes. Please do not take it personally. And if you're here live, we'll thank you for your time and quickly end the segment. But again, not personal, just trying to keep it fair and equitable for everyone with the three-minute timeline. So with that, Ms. Scott or Ms. Harris, do we have any Zoom speakers?
David Bagni.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, board members. Well, here we are. It's November and everything, every epidemiologist and biologist told us what happened is happening. To be frank, I don't know if this is going to take all three minutes or not, because I'm not quite sure what to say anymore. I could spend my time harping on all the facts about the virus and the long-term impacts it has on the body like I did last month. But frankly, what else more is there to say? The news continues to be grim on that front. I mean, for all of the people who are claiming we need to open everything up, including the schools, because being away from other people causes mental health issues, trust me, I definitely sympathize with that. The latest study is bad news for that reasoning as well, because guess what else causes mental health issues? That's right, getting COVID. About 20% of COVID patients are reporting mental health issues of some sort. That includes not just your usual suspects like depression and anxiety, but more serious issues like dementia as well. I don't know if exposing people to the virus in the name of mental health is a sound and logical reason, to say the least. Look, I think we all know Carney is passing the buck to you guys at this point, and we all know that that's not fair, especially as he and Dr. Ratai try to make these claims about how there's, you know, no try to make these claims about how there's, you know, no spread in the schools and cites things like maskless lunch eating as, you know, kind of brush it off as no big deal, something that can be avoided and, you know, accounted for. But that's obviously going, something that's going to continue to happen as we shove more people into the buildings. The kids have to eat at some point anyway. So, and we all know that the lack of federal stimulus and payments to businesses is preventing him from doing the right thing and closing things down. But we don't and you don't have to let his cowardice or inability to act, whatever you want to call it, stop you from doing the right thing. We can look at the numbers, look at where the country is heading. There's no good or safe way to put people into buildings at this point. I think we all know that. And, and, you know, the more I read, like, I'm asking, what are we even doing here? And I don't mean we as us in this room, but we as in the broader population. We're watching our doctors and nurses get pushed to the brink, talking about patients who are using their last gasping breaths to express anger at their fake diagnosis of COVID. And we're sending people back into buildings. And I just keep thinking about the doctors and nurses and what they have to go through at this point. So to finish, I'll just say, we're months away from a working vaccine. The early data is more than promising, and while it may not be here soon enough to save this school year, it's coming sooner rather than later. And doing our part to prevent people from getting sick in the meantime is the smart and right thing to do. When you have good news on a vaccine like that, it means it's the time to get more strict, not more lax. So let's keep us safe, let's keep our families safe, let's do the right thing, let's keep Delawareans healthy long term. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Venkatesh Baghnooni.
Nima.
Hello. My name is Naema Abdurahouf. I'm speaking to address the class size waiver. I'm a parent of a kindergarten at Caracroft, a hybrid cohort two student, an 11th grader at Mount Pleasant and a wife of a high school teacher at Concord. Due to these facts, I'm aware of the current struggle that parents and teachers are going through in this current online, a hybrid teaching environment. In the current situation, it's too stressful for the teachers and parents. We could barely keep up. To add more students to each class means more stress and less support for the students, which means less learning. In this COVID environment, the school board should be trying to get more state and federal funds to get more support staff for the current teacher, not adding more students to the existing classes. In addition, the district is relying too much on the parents for support throughout the school day. I have been blessed to be able to work full-time at home since COVID-19 spread. But this doesn't mean I have time to homeschool while maintaining a full-time job. Again, I didn't sign up for homeschooling for my children. So more teachers aid to help the teachers who are there trying to help our students online really is required other than relying on the parents so much. I'm really disturbed of the consideration of increasing the class size beyond 22. As a Newcastle County taxpayer, I expect better than this. I'm done. I say thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm finished.
Thank you, Ms. Ralph.
Alex Bray.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board and Mr. Superintendent. I'm a contact tracer with the state, and I'm also a son of a kindergarten teacher within the Brandywine School District. As we just heard from the superintendent, our state is seeing a huge surge in cases of COVID-19. I, as a contact tracer, are being asked to work overtime to contact all the positive cases. I worked today and we had over 1,500 cases in our queues to work. Over the past week, many school districts in our area have announced their return to remote learning, including Philadelphia, Montgomery, and Delaware County School Districts, along with Red Clay shutting down two elementary schools and Colonial announcing over the weekend their return to remote learning. And AI DuPont Middle School just announced within the past hour they're shutting down. Yet our district began hybrid learning last week for kindergarten and first grade. With this surge of COVID-19 cases, my stomach is in knots for my mom's safety. As a contact tracer, I know that you can put every precaution in place, and I'm sure the district has, and they still can have an outbreak. My question to this body and to the district is when will you put safety of your employees and students at the forefront and move back to remote learning? The fact of the matter is we are becoming worse off, not better. And the longer you continue in-person instruction, the longer you put the health and safety of your employees and students at risk. When will it be enough? When people get sick, when we have an outbreak at school, when someone dies? At that point, it will be too late. You can make the change tonight by voting to go back to remote learning. I love this district. I'm a alum of this district. But I'm very disappointed with the decisions this district has made over the past few months. I fear for my mom's safety. I do not want to plan my mother's funeral because the district did not plan her, did not put her safety at the forefront. Let me repeat that so you all can hear it. I do not want to plan my mother's funeral because this district did not put her safety at the forefront. Please make this change sooner rather than later by voting tonight to go back to remote learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprague.
Abby Cypress.
Good evening, Mr. Holer and members of the board. I would like to begin by addressing the reporting of positive cases in schools. It is my understanding from the information posted on the Brandywine School District website that families will be notified of any positive cases in the classroom and/or the school. I believe that families and staff should be notified of any positive cases in the school. It's my understanding that some schools in the district are already doing this, but others are only notifying the people within the affected classroom. In the interest of transparency, I believe the district should be telling the entire school community when there has been a reported positive case in the building. On a more dire note, here we are, a month after our last board meeting, and the COVID situation in Delaware is significantly worse than it was then. And here we are, a month after our last board meeting, and Brandywine School District is continuing on its path to bring more people into buildings. Our governor says that COVID is not spreading in schools. That may be true for now, although I don't believe there is significant data to support that statement, given the small number of public schools that have been open for in-person instruction for a significant length of time. In districts where students have returned, we see school closures, as in Red Clay, and the entire Colonial School District returning to remote instruction. In our surrounding states, we see the city of Philadelphia recently announcing that it will not proceed with hybrid instruction, keeping everyone, everyone remote for the foreseeable future. And Cecil County, Maryland schools have just announced a return to remote instruction as well. These closures indicate an opposition to what our government is, governor is saying about the risk of spread in schools. I am not a scientist who has researched this, so I don't know what the truth is. What I do know is that the chances of contracting COVID are higher if a person goes into a school building than if they stay at home. Thanksgiving is coming. Students and families are already making plans, despite the governor's recommendations, to travel and to be with family. Similar plans are being made for winter break. Families are exposing themselves to the risk of COVID and then planning to send their children into school buildings, putting students, staff, and their families at risk. It is with this in mind, along with the alarming statistics that Mr. Holer shared at the beginning of this meeting and the rising numbers of cases in Delaware, specifically in zip codes feeding to Brandywine School District schools, where three of the zip codes are reporting over 150 cases per 1,000, 100,000 people, and the others are reporting over 100,000, 100 cases per 100,000 people, that I implore you to implement a swift return to full remote instruction until after the holidays. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cypress.
Anne Kennedy.
As you know, I'm president of the AFT Federation Union Local 762, and I represent the parent educators employed by the Brandywine School District. Today is the 321st day of 2020. Quite frankly, it feels like a decade has passed since March 13th. Everybody's stressed, fatigued, and uncertain of what tomorrow's going to bring. Schools have been opening and cohorts have been returning. We've been doing our best to educate our kids, whether remotely or in person, while hiding our own level of distress from them. We keep a smile on our face, although you might not be able to see that through our mask. This is happening in the midst of a global pandemic, which according to Delaware, Delaware's records is spreading at a critical rate. Although Brandywine is providing the PPE and it's certainly being used, I'm not convinced that's enough to protect us from the surging pandemic. In addition to the pandemic, we're currently in allergy as well as cold and flu seasons. Many of our students are presenting with symptoms associated with those ailments. During these times, we can't assume that they're not sick. In fact, we were told that each building would have a quarantine room for students with any of the symptoms on the list, not, not just a fever. I know, I know that the nurses are holding some students in quarantine, but I know in some cases, students are being returned to their classrooms. I also understand that some students have been medically exempted for wearing masks. Many students who wear them though were unable to wear them properly. I also understand that those who work closely with the students, when I say closely, I mean person-to-person contact, they have a heightened level of anxiety. What I find disheartening is that sometimes when expressing how they feel, some are met with a dismissive attitude and simply told to use their PPE. If it were me, I'd feel better about my situation and I'd feel more appreciated if my feelings are validated. Fortunately, we seem closer to a vaccine, but we're not there yet. Delaware right now, based on per capita population, is at a critical risk of community spread. Officials are advising against getting together for a family meal on Thanksgiving, but they're saying it's safe to be in a classroom for over six hours a day. Since we're having meals in the classroom, there's at least 30 to 45 minutes per day where students are not required, wired to wear a mask so that they can eat and drink. Let's couple that with this being allergy, cold, and flu season, and the classroom can quickly become a Petri dish. So in closing, it appears that Governor Carney is moving the goalpost back and has changed the metrics on the reopening to to school guidance from the Department of Ed on the COVID-19 dashboard. I know that makes your job as a school board a lot more difficult. These changes serve to keep the schools open under more dire circumstances than previously stated. I guess my question is here, under what circumstances will you consider returning to high, to remote learning only in an effort to prevent further spread of COVID-19 to the Brandywine, in the Brandywine community?
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy.
Katie Winters.
Good evening. My name is Katie Winters, and I'm an English teacher at Brandywine High School. First, I want to acknowledge that the decision of how to conduct school during a global pandemic is an incredibly complex and nuanced one. The narrow focus of my comments this evening stem from the current extreme situation we find ourselves in as a nation and as a state. Education is and should always be centered around facts, research, and expert opinion. My teacher training revolved around brain science and research-based strategies. The Brandywine School District is a district that prides itself on employing research-based strategies throughout its schools because we know that techniques based in research, not opinion, provide the best learning experience. I ask the board to continue to make decisions based on research and facts. We are all suffering from pandemic fatigue, and these feelings inevitably bleed into our thoughts on the return to in-person learning. We are human. We miss what we used to consider normal. However, we are not living in normal times. We are living through a global pandemic, and it is a fact that we are currently experiencing a COVID surge and a fact that medical experts are asking us to take measures to respond to that surge. Just a few days ago, the state reported 465 cases in one day, the second highest number of cases in the entirety of the pandemic. With numbers that high, the likelihood of interacting with an infected person spikes dramatically, and the consequences of being around others become increasingly more serious. Now is not the time to move to more in-person learning. Now is the time to reassess the plan. Dr. Ratai from Delaware's Division of Public Health noted that eating and drinking with people outside of your household is one of the most dangerous activities in terms of virus spread. In fact, it is one of the examples she provided about the virus spreading in school. We are approaching holidays when people inevitably will be eating and socializing with people outside of their household, increasing this already dramatic rise in cases. It is also worth noting that any hybrid school day would include eating and drinking with those outside our household, and cohorts seven, eight, and nine are scheduled to return quite soon after Thanksgiving break. I ask that you halt or postpone all plans of hybrid instruction and return to full remote during this COVID surge, during the holiday season, including Thanksgiving and winter break, as well as the two weeks after, when the virus is predicted by experts to spread at an even greater rate and during the height of cold and flu season. Please protect our students and our staff and show them that expert opinion and facts are what we rely on in times of crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winters.
Christopher Graham.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Holer and members of the board of the school board. I was a little surprised last month, listening to last month's meeting, that no parents had presented any perspectives. First of all, I want to thank everybody working in the school district, the teachers, the support staff. I know my daughter, who's in kindergarten, gets messages from her teachers late in the evening and on the weekends. So we know they're putting in extraordinary time to try to do everything they can to get education to these students. And as the last speaker said, we want to listen to the experts. I'm fortunate that I work with many of the medical experts in our field. Just a few hours ago, I was working on a unit in a hospital with multiple COVID patients. And I understand the fear that is there. I understand that it is scary. But we also need to listen to the experts. And the experts in these cases are saying that it is safe for our children to return to school, that the greater danger is in what they're going to lose by not being in school and by not getting their education. Just last week, WDEL released a statement from the State Department of Education listing the number of cases among students and teachers at schools. And the contact tracing revealed they were not contracting these cases at school. Additionally, last month, The New York Times featured an article on October 22nd studying from Boston Children's Hospital, one of the top children's hospitals in the United States, reaching the same conclusions. We are fortunate also that we have, just in our local area, AI DuPont Children's Hospital, who last month had an op-ed in Delaware Online. And if I may read from that, it says, "Transmission from kids to adults is rare. Transmission of infection between healthcare workers and patients is extraordinarily rare. An emerging body of literature demonstrates young children transmit the virus ineffectively, and in family outbreaks of COVID-19, children are rarely the index case. Extrapolating these findings to the education setting, we wouldn't expect young children to effectively transmit the virus to teachers and staff. The physicians and many of the nurses that I work alongside have children in private schools and Catholic schools who have been attending in-person classes since September. We are creating an education gap between the children who go to public school and the children whose families have the means to send them elsewhere. And as a parent, I am begging you to please keep our children in the classroom. Thank you."
Thank you. And I believe that is our last speaker. We heard a lot of comments tonight, and thank you for everyone that- We heard a lot of comments tonight, and thank you for everyone that took the time to sign up to speak. You know, I hope everyone sticks around for the rest of the meeting. I know this isn't a response to comments, but I feel like with everything going on, we do need to continue the conversation, maybe as a follow-up to the superintendent's report, that certainly the classroom waiver will be discussed later in the meeting tonight, and I think there's some good information there. And as far as, you know, like the superintendent said, we're continuing to monitor the situation. You know, the board, the district, the superintendent, you know, for the last eight months, we've been inundated with emails with everyone weighing in on their position on open schools, closed schools, make a change, don't make a change. You know, certainly, we get equal amounts on both sides. But I think what's important in the superintendent's comments tonight is that we are continuing to look at this every single day, every hour. You know, we're weighing all the stakeholders. We're getting information from multiple sources, whether it be the governor's office, DPH, you know, anywhere and anything we can to make our decisions. And I think from the plan that's been laid out since August and September has shown a measured approach. We're moving things slowly, bringing groups in, in small groups, with a measured approach so that we can stay on top of things. And I think through the district's own contact tracing, we have performed better than our neighboring districts, whether it's neighboring in our county, in our state, you know, neighboring districts across state lines. You know, we're taking a measured approach and we're monitoring that. And I think a lot of the, you know, other schools that we're seeing that have made the decision to close or go back to full remote, they're experiencing outbreaks, and we're just, we're not seeing that right now. And, you know, we have the break coming up. As superintendent stated, you know, we're continuing to look at that. We're prepared to make the move when we need to. So I think we'll continue to do that, and it's not an easy decision. And everybody that has their position on one side or the other is passionate about it. We respect that, and we're, you know, trying to keep our students' needs at the forefront as well as balance that with the needs of our staff and our teachers who are on the front lines. So I just, I think it's important to, you know, go back to previous superintendent's reports, what we've laid out from the beginning, how we're monitoring that, what we're doing. And, you know, from everything that I'm seeing from the superintendent, from the administrative team, we're doing it as safely as possible as we can. So I hope that sets some people at ease. I know it won't set everyone at ease. But we are mindful of everyone's position, and these are hard decisions to make. But I appreciate, you know, everyone's time to make comments, to email us and the district's team to, you know, continue to make a plan, evaluate the plan, and modify the plan. If anyone else on the board wanted to have a comment or say anything, you know, that would be a good time.
I heard a comment or two about, sounds weird. I heard a comment or two about the notification process. And I know we've read the policy, but maybe the superintendent could just share a little bit about what triggers a notification and then exactly what groups are notified, if there is a positive.
Absolutely. We have protocols in place, and we have clearly defined that anytime there's a case in any building, the entire staff of that building will be notified. Those who are deemed to have been in close contact with that positive individual will be talked to personally and told of their close contact and immediately sent home. They will be given directions to monitor for symptoms. And the rest of the building, those who did not have close contact with the positive individual, will still receive communication, not stating the name of the individual, but just alerting the staff to the fact that there was a positive, either student or staff member in the building. Again, trying to be fully transparent. When it comes to the students, if the student was in a classroom, we notify everyone in that classroom, again, under the guidance and direction of the Department of Public Health. And to the best of my knowledge, we're notifying the rest of that school that was on-site that day when that individual, we learned that they were positive. So I can tell you that there was a case today in one of our buildings where a student was identified from last Wednesday. Finally got the test results back showing that it was positive, and that student was in class last Monday and Tuesday as part of our initial cohort. Every student that was on-site that day received notification, or not even that day, I'm sorry, every student in that cohort, that Monday, Tuesday cohort. We did not notify the students in the Thursday, Friday cohort because they had no exposure, and that deep cleaning day had already taken place on that Wednesday. So again, we've said time after time, if it was my child, would I want to know of a positive case even if he or she was not directly contacted? I would, and we're going to continue to do that. I'm not aware of any lapses in that protocol, but we will follow up tomorrow just to make crystal clear that that is happening. I asked each principal, they send me copies of every notice that's sent out to the staff members as well as the parents, and I personally keep them on file.
Anyone else? Okay, with that, moving on to board member liaison reports. We'll start with the Delaware School Boards Association Executive Board, Mr. Ackerman.
The DSBA met on November 4th. We did meet in person, and we did have a quorum of the members present. Our corporate sponsor, which I don't normally talk about, but it was a representative from L&amp;W Insurance. And he brought to our attention, which I think we've talked about separately, that the DIAA has not renewed their accident policy for this year. Normally, districts, the first 50,000 is covered by DIAA. They had a great rate for that $50,000 of coverage, and they decided to let it lapse on the idea that the state of Delaware is a sovereign immunity. It's a bad time, I think, to use that as a reason to let coverage lapse. So I think as a result, I'm sure Dr. Hale can tell us that we have picked up that coverage ourselves because it is the right thing to do, whether the state or the district can be sued or not. So I think that was a very short-sighted move on the part of DIAA. The rest of the meeting consisted of a discussion of the Carney lawsuit, which we saw today moved with the counties being tasked with reassessments, and that going to trial, I think, sometime in March. We also talked about the NSBA annual meeting, which may become a virtual meeting next year. Also, the Advocacy Institute, which is generally in January. We are not necessarily committed to going unless we're going to have access to our members of Congress. And we don't have access, there really isn't a lot of point in making the trip. We did revise 11 different DSBA policies to bring them up to date, at which point we then moved to a roundtable discussion. There was a lot of discussion around potential legislation to allow, potential legislation to allow boards to continue to use Zoom after the state of emergency ends, and under what basis that would be done. So it was a lively discussion and a good meeting. You will get a copy of those minutes in Board Docs this week. Ms. Harris was going to send it out last week, but it didn't get sent out. She will send it out this week. She'll let me know. And that's my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. Delaware School Boards Association Legislative Committee, Ms. Gordon.
The Legislative Committee has not met since our last board meeting. The next meeting is scheduled for February 3rd, 2021. However, when the legislature begins meeting in January, Dr. Marinucci will be sending information on any bills presented that affect education, and I'll be forwarding that information to the board via Board Docs.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. The District Finance Committee held its monthly meeting on Tuesday, November 10th. We reviewed the October monthly financial report, which Dr. Hale will present shortly. There were no other public comment or items of note, and our next meeting is scheduled for December 9th. Communications Advisory Work Group, Reverend Perry.
Well, the Communication Advisory Work Group has not met since our last meeting. Our next meeting will be held Monday, December 7th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Reverend Perry. Maintenance Advisory Committee, Mr. Heller.
Also did not meet since the last meeting due to Election Day. The next meeting will be December 1st, I believe, at Darley Road.
Parent Council for Students with Disability, Ms. Pigeon. Thank you, Ms. Heller.
The next Parent Council meeting is November 18th from 6:30 to 8:00 PM, and it is a Zoom meeting. I would just like to take a moment to clarify that the Parent Council meetings are now being held through invitation. So in years past, Parent Council meetings were open meetings. But I believe it's been one or maybe a year and a half that the format of the meeting has changed. And so specific parents from each building are nominated by the school district, by the building administration to represent their school at our Parent Council meetings. So for families that, they are representing, they have a different person representing each year, so it's not necessarily the same parent that's the representative they're rotating through. But the idea is that that parent representative would bring the information back to the buildings and share that information that was gathered from the Parent Council meeting. So for families that maybe haven't received notice of the meetings, that's the reason why there may be some confusion about that. But if anyone has any questions, they can reach out to me or to Nicole Warner, who is the new Special Education Director for the district, to see where they can maybe get involved if they would like to. And that's my update.
Thank you, Ms. Pigeon. Parents and Citizen Advisory Committee, Ms. Gordon.
We are continuing to plan for our first meeting. We're waiting for new members from some of our schools that will be invited to participate by their building principals. The date will now be in January so that we will be able to identify the topic of the meeting after a planning session with, hopefully, we have committee co-chairs. All committee members will then receive the date and the topic as soon as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Health Advisory Committee, Dr. Zarek.
The Health Advisory Committee has not met since our last meeting. Our next meeting is November 18th at 4:15 on Zoom. We also have set up a new Health to You series. It's in conjunction with NAMI, who's been presenting on pandemic stress. It's called "Let's Talk: Coping with Pandemic Stress and Tips for Self-Care." It will be Tuesday, December 1st at 6:30 on Zoom. There's information about this on Facebook, and we will be on the district website. This is for parents, educators, staff, community members, and also Brandywine School District employees will be able to earn professional development time for attending this event as well. That is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Zarek. 917 WMPH Advisory Committee had their quarterly meeting on Monday, November 9th. We were updated to the fact that there's no live DJing currently going on, only voice tracks for now, but students have been pre-recording voice tracks to simulate DJing. WMPH has also revived the BSD gratitude notes for Thanksgiving. This can be found on wmph.net or on the Mount Pleasant High School page through the district website, where students, families, members of the listening audience can share audio, video, or written submissions of what they are grateful for. Even in these stressful times, I think it's important to find something that we can all be thankful for. WMPH has continued to broadcast as normal through the last quarterly period. They begin airing a segment called "Hometown Heroes" in our partnership with Delaware Public Media. This was a program that focused on local artists. Previously, the segment was on local station WSTW. WMPH held coverage through NPR for the two vice presidential debates. And then we recovered that all licensing, regulatory, and maintenance requirements have been fulfilled. Our next quarterly meeting is scheduled tentatively for Monday, March 8th, 2021. And that is the end of the radio report. Did anyone else have any additional updates or reports they wanted to share?
I do.
Reverend Perry?
Yes. I just wanted to share that I, along with Eric Anderson, who is the head of Sussex Academy, Senator Nicole Moore of the 12th District, Stephanie Ingram was the president of DSEA. We had the pleasure of serving as panelists during the Delaware State PTA Convention last Thursday, where our topic was, you guessed it, reopening schools. And so Governor Carney actually opened the convention with his remarks and providing a COVID-19 update as it relates to Delaware schools. Dr. Rick Hung of the Delaware Public Health also attended and answered questions from registered participants. He provided the scientific and medical perspective. And our discussions included overview of the various reopening plans, inclusion of parents, families, and teachers in our decision-making, the process of communicating COVID-19 positive cases to parents and families, and supporting, how do the various districts support teachers and staff? We also took time to clarify provisions of PPE and ensuring and communicating that the various districts were providing supplies for our teachers and staff. There was also a grassroots advocacy training and presentation, which was well-received. The convention overall was very informative and has since then generated a lot of conversation on Facebook surrounding the topic of reopening. The PTA membership appreciated, expressed their appreciation for us, those of us who served as panelists. And so I just want to publicly thank the PTA for hosting the convention and providing the atmosphere or the setting where we could both give information but also hear from the membership. Also want to thank our superintendent, Mr. Link Holder, Ms. Lisa Lawson, and Cora Scott for your leadership, BSD teachers and staff, especially our maintenance staff for all of your work and commitment to our students. I also want to thank our students and their families for working together. We all understand that this is not ideal, an ideal situation for any of us. However, but we believe that working together to educate our students and to ensure maximum safety for everyone involved. So thank you so much again for those individuals, and I look forward to continuing the dialogue.
Thank you, Reverend Perry. Did anyone else have anything to add?
Just a quick comment following up on Mr. Ackerman's report around the DIAA and the cancellation of the catastrophic injury insurance. You know, we talk about our district's success plan, and we emphasize certain goals in that plan, one of them being good fiscal stewards to the local taxpayer. And I have to commend Dr. Jason Hale. We found out last minute about the cancellation. All districts found out last minute. But I can tell you that within 24 hours and before our insurance lapsed, we had something in place, again, just protecting the district as we should be. And I just appreciate that attention to speed and to, again, And I just appreciate that attention to speed and to, again, being good stewards to the local taxpayer.
Thank you, Mr. Haller. Thank you all board members for all of your reports. Moving on, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moves us on to. Personnel matters. We had no personnel matters this month, correct? So student matters. Do I have a motion to approve student matters as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
We do have a personnel monthly report.
Yeah, the report has to be approved.
Oh, personnel monthly report, isn't there? Going back. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Motion carries. Now student matters. Do I have a motion to approve student matters as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Old business.
It's just robot.
Yes.
Just to go back to personnel month report, just to keep you honest, we never voted.
I thought maybe when I read student matters, going back, can we vote on the monthly personnel report? We had a motion and a second. And any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries. Good on personnel report. We are now good on student matters. Now we're in old business. So regarding the BSD policy of Title IX, all members of the board were presented with a copy of the draft at last meeting. For review with an opportunity to present any comments or feedback. Do I hear a motion to accept the updated policy draft?
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries. New business, new business. Dr. Hale. Will you please share with us the monthly financial report?
I'm going to share to share my screen here momentarily. There we go. Good evening. The information on the screen is the October 31st, 2020. Monthly financial report. Go to the first page, which you can see that the state funding has not changed over the last several months. Now that the I would call the November 13th unit count has been completed. We will then finalize that information and send that down to Department of Education. Just want to give a shout out to Kim Doherty. There's a lot of work involved in that process, and she does a tremendous job going around and making sure everybody is completing all the documentation and everything. So thank you to Kim Doherty for that. Once that's finalized, we'll then go through the process of. Completing all of our allocations. This is a very important month for us. As this is the month where we receive the majority of our tax revenue. I'm very pleased to say that we have we are in a better position this year than we were last year at this time. So what I mean by that is, you know, certainly with everything going on over the course of the last six months or eight months. There was certainly some concern as to how the revenue would come in, and I'm pleased to say that. That the total tax revenue we're currently at about almost 97%. So that's certainly a great spot for us. That's a big relief. Moving on to the expenditures. The buildings and the departments have been doing a great job with their budgets. Certainly, there have been some increased expenditure related to COVID. We've been doing a number of grants that have been submitted through the state for various things that you'll see when we present. For your information, the final budget next month. But from a spending perspective, everything is looking to be in good shape. Certainly make some adjustments as we go through based on information to date. The key information that we look at certainly is our salary numbers. That's the largest portion of our budget. And you can see that at this point in the year, we're almost 35% of the way through the year yet. We're at almost 33%. So we're about a percent and a half under what our projected expenditures would be at this time.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Can you go back up? I I there's something, can you just explain, wait, stop right there. CS CRP, what does that acronym stand for?
That's the CARES funding. That is the stimulus fund. I'm sorry. The.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's the cost recovery. So we have one individual that is a cost recovery person for Newcastle County. That so that person really works for all of Newcastle County. It's a Department of Education employee that we essentially pay. We are, we receive all of the funding from the state, so that individual is not someone that costs this district anything. It's just because we are they are housed in this district, we receive all of the funding for that individual. And the way that that works is as those individuals phase out. The new hired individual will be employee of the Department of Education. So they're essentially our employee technically, but all of the funding that we receive is from the state.
It's on this page, but then it's also, I think, above in a expense, right?
Yes, we receive equal. So whatever that cost is in total for that individual. For all the salary in OECs, we receive that directly from the state. So it's it's a it's essentially a wash. It's, you know, the money that comes in pays directly the expenditure. So it that and that is for Medicaid billing. So that individual works all of Newcastle County and processes Medicaid billing. So thank you.
Thank you.
Lastly, I just wanted to point out the cash flow statement, which you can see that on page. Let's see what page is that? Page seven, that we have changed the projection as of June 30, 2021. Previously. The number was in about 10.1 million, based on the increases in the projections for tax revenue for this year, as well as. Some of lower than expected expenditures, increasing that amount to 11.3 million. And that's something that we'll continue to monitor over the course of the next several months. But as we go through the the planning process for the final budget, we'll begin to kind of tweak that number. So that's certainly some good news as well. This information was reviewed in detail at the DFC meeting, and certainly I would answer any questions that anyone may have.
Dr. Hale, I know in the beginning of the pandemic, the state's projections for revenue in the upcoming year were pretty dire. Are they still on track to be dire? Have has the state revised their forecast anyway?
So there was a DFAC meeting, and that is the body that reviews all of the forecasting expenditure and 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 revenue for the state. In October, and the DFAC group came back with higher projections in revenue. So over the course of a two-year period, it's roughly about $350 million in addition. So certainly that's great news. It's an early projection. There'll be another meeting in December and then a final meeting in March. The March meeting is certainly the most important because that's the one that really pinpoints the personal income tax information. So certainly that's some very good news to see that the revenue projection has come up, and we'll certainly hope that that comes up again in December.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from the board?
I had a quick question.
Sure.
Do we have the unit count available? Like, did we get that number? Is it still in process?
So we actually just finished on Friday, so we have until midweek to get all of the forms. So each building has a number of forms that have to be signed and submitted to the Department of Education. So that's really what Kim has been doing a great job rounding up all of that information that we then submit to the state. They will then process and even short us that they will process it quickly so that we can get all of the finalized information. So we'll have that for you at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
If that any other questions or comments, I will accept a motion. I will entertain a motion to accept the monthly financial report subject to audit.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the waiver of provisions of Section 14 Delaware Code Maximum Student Instructor Ratio. Board members have been presented with the district's request for a class size waiver for a single classroom with enrollment of 23 students. Dr. Hale, did you have anything to present on that or?
I mean, I can certainly speak to it quickly. I know there were a few questions during public comments. Just wanted to make sure that. It's fully understood as to what this process is. And part of Delaware code is that any classroom that has more than 22 students without additional supports. As of November 1st, the district would be required to ask the board for a waiver of class size. And I think it's very important to note that we have a team that we call the allocations team. That we on a weekly basis review all of the information, enrollment information, speak directly with. Miss Selina Jones Davis, as well as all the principals in the elementary schools to look at need. You know, this information that you see here is the 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 number of classrooms in excess of 22. You can see that all of them, with the exception of one, have additional supports. In this particular instance, speaking directly with the principal, there was no concern as to that one single classroom having 23. And this is a case where one student in that in that particular classroom is what kicks us over the waiver. And we are a district that, you know, we are going to come right to the, you know, if there's not additional supports in that. In that class, we're going to come directly to the board, and we have not asked for waiver over the course of the last two years. Previous to that, there had been one. Our average class size is the best it's probably ever been at 20, roughly 20. So that's something that the allocations team has worked very hard over the last several years to make sure that we are bringing those class sizes down. So I would say that we have some of the better class sizes and and not only the county, but probably the state. So we're just asking in this one particular instance for this one class, this is not something that this waiver does not provide a waiver. A grand waiver over the entire district. This is for one classroom that has 23 students.
No, I appreciate that, and I think, you know, some of the misinformation that I've seen myself on social media. You know, it is important, like you said, that, you know, we haven't asked for a waiver for the last two years. And the fact that this pertains to one class that exceeds by one student. And we've been able to, you know, provide additional supports for the other classes that need it. And I think in some of our earlier conversations with the information supplied. Our average K to three class size is 20.04 students. So I think that's very impressive. It speaks to the work the allocations committee does in, you know, trying to keep our classes as small as we possibly can. Add teachers when we need to, add supports when it serves the students best. So I thank you for that. Any other questions or comments?
I have a a comment. I think I also like to make it noted. That when a class size waiver is not approved, the district is financially responsible for providing the local expense of that. Predict additional support person out of local funds. So that's a lot of the reason behind receiving this waiver is so that we. You know, can approve that, right, Mr. Hale?
Absolutely, yes. So I mean, certainly, you know, we in the in the allocations process focus heavily, really it's needs. So, you know, there are classrooms that have far fewer than 22 that require additional supports. And if the if the classroom is in need, we work to provide those supports for that classroom. And in this particular instance, after extensive conversation with the principal, this particular class did not need additional supports. And that's why we're asking for this waiver.
Mr. President. Could I ask that the information that's being shown on the Zoom, the incorporated into the board minutes under class waiver? I think that's good information for the public to have to understand the process and what's going on. I mean, the only thing that's in board docs is the public notice that was in the newspaper. So I think it'd be nice to, you know, include this as well. Well done, by the way.
Thank you, Reverend.
I would agree, but in the past, Mr. Hale, we've also received like class sizes. I don't know if that's part of the September 30th count that hasn't been completed that we'll receive next month. Or.
I can certainly provide, I mean, any specific information that you would have at which whatever level, I can certainly provide that for you. So I can reach out to you directly, and we can have that. I can certainly prepare information in any any way you'd like to see.
I I just think it would be helpful because I in going back and looking through previous year's information, I did find. So I don't think it should just necessarily be me that receives the information because I found it helpful to look back and see our class sizes and see. How high they used to be and then where they kind of have come down. And so I think just the documentation is important over history, I guess.
Absolutely, I can get that for you. Absolutely.
I have I have one quick question. So when we approve, if we approve the waiver for tonight, is this approving future class sizes? That if there's another class that a couple of kids join and they become over 23, have we already approved those classes in the future? Or is it just approving what's happening right now?
So this waiver is is based on data as of November 1st. So the allocations team continues to meet. So certainly, under these circumstances. We're seeing fluctuations in enrollment, and we certainly expect there to be increases in enrollment as we move forward. And as needs exist, we're going to address them and and provide additional supports to the additional classroom teachers. So really, it has to do with really taking a needs-based approach on this, and as needs arise, we address them. So this is only for this one class, and that is it.
Great, thank you.
Dr. Zarek, you make a very good point. You know, one of the things that the School Board Association has been working on is to trying to get a mid-year unit count. Optional for districts, probably sometime mid-January or February timeframe. For just the reasons that we're talking about where students come in. It impacts Apoclimactic much more than it does Brandywine. They tend to get, you know, 300 students. Wandering in during the year, which is almost an entire school, but it does certainly have an impact on us as well.
Great.
All right, well, I will now entertain a motion to accept the request for class size waiver.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. As a matter of general information, future board meetings, our next regular meeting will be held on December 14th, 2020. Followed by January 29th and February 22nd. All currently scheduled for hybrid format, BHS auditorium and Zoom. And I would encourage everyone to have a safe holiday break. And hopefully we can all find something to be thankful for. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you for attending, everyone.
Thank you.